Call to order, the Gladstone Planning Commission, Gladstone City Hall, 525 Portland Avenue, Gladstone, Oregon. Today is Tuesday, January the fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Langston?
Present.
Commissioner Natalie Smith?
Present.
Commissioner Malachi?
Here.
Commissioner Poole?
Here.
Commissioner Wentz? Commissioner Pat Smith?
Here.
Chair Rowlett?
Here.
Let's salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. So, the first thing we're going to do is elect a Planning Commission Chair and Vice Chair, which is a new thing that we will be doing on the first meeting every year. According to Municipal Code 2.10.050, the Gladstone Planning Commission is appointed by the City Council and serves two-year terms. So, would someone like to nominate? I nominate Randy Rowlett as for Chair, and I'll accept that.
Do you need a second?
No.
Okay. I'd like to nominate Malachi for Vice Chair.
Okay.
Do we have to do it separately?
I think you need to do it separately, yes.
So, any more nominations for Chair? Okay, let's call a vote.
Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Natalie Smith?
Yes, for Randy.
Commissioner Malachi?
Yes.
Commissioner Poole?
Yes, for Randy.
Commissioner Pat Smith?
Yes.
And, thank you very much. I appreciate your confidence. So, let's call a roll for Vice Chair.
Does anybody else have any other nomination?
There was no other nominations for Chair.
Vice Chair, I mean.
Vice Chair.
So far, I've only heard Malachi. Anybody else want to make a nomination? All right, let's call a roll.
Commissioner Langston?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Natalie Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Malachi?
I think I have seen, right?
Now, you can vote for yourself.
You can vote for yourself, I think.
Commissioner Poole?
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith?
Yes.
Chair Rowlett?
Yes. Congratulations to the newly-appointed Chair and Vice Chair. So, with that, tonight's meeting, we'll do the consent agenda first, and then the monthly planning report on the regular agenda. Public hearing will be the third item, and business from the Planning Commission, and then we'll adjourn. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to testify for the hearing? And/or would you like to speak prior to the regular public hearing? If you want to speak about anything related to the hearing, we have cards to fill out for that. So, are you here for the public hearing, for the Tonkin? And are you part of that, or just public?
She's with Development.
Okay, good. So, Bob, did you want to speak for? Okay.
I'm here for other reasons.
Mayor?
Uh, I'm here for something else.
Okay, would-
Thank you for asking.
You're welcome. So, the consent agenda is next. All items listed below are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There would be no separate discussion of these items unless the commission member or person in the audience requests specific items be removed from the consent agenda for discussion prior to the time the commission votes on the motion to adopt the consent agenda. Would someone like to make a motion or discuss the consent agenda?
I would just like to thank the city for taking the time to put it all together last month. I think there was a lot of information there, and we appreciate the effort that they put forward.
And I also really appreciate the new expanded minutes or notes are really good. It's, you know, really easy to see if you don't watch the meeting online, which is, all the meetings are online. You can read through that and get a pretty good idea of what was going on, too.
Could I add, before we swell your head too far, that I intended to say the same thing today. It's just definitely things that reports and things are more clear. There's more verbiage about what actually happened. And it's hard to capture the spirit of the meeting or the spirit of what everyone says in minutes. But the closer we are to doing that, the better off we are. And I certainly appreciate your approach to your position.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
I appreciate this advice.
We're very thankful, and we appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
For doing a good job.
Motion?
I was going to make a motion that we accept the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Natalie Smith and Les Poole. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None opposed? Then our consent agenda is approved. Before we start the regular agenda, which is the monthly planning report and a public hearing, would anybody like to speak about anything? The public like to speak about anything at all prior to that?
Uh, all I wanted to do. Tammy Stumpel, Mayor. I just wanted to let everybody know that we'll be making liaison appointments at the next meeting. And as I've done in the past, I've allowed the committees and boards to make recommendations to me on who they would like to work with. So, if somebody feels strongly one way or the other, please let me know by probably the end of the first week of February.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is the monthly planning report.
So, I'll just start by giving a summary of the year total. It's customer service counter contacts. We had ninety, so that's people coming to the counter at the county's office and asking to see me and having a question about zoning or land use in the city of Gladstone or building permit sign-off, things like that. Customer phone contacts, we had five hundred and thirty-three over the whole year. Twenty-eight building permits were issued, eight pre-application conferences, and one administrative decision, which I think was a signed permit. So, there were some questions about the building, one of the building permits that we signed off on, on Barbary Place. We had an email from a concerned neighbor. I think there were a couple of other emails that we're swirling through at one point. They're converting an existing single-family home into a foster care. So, they're converting rooms inside the home and I think part of a garage for foster care. That's allowed outright in that zone. It's in the code. So, from a planning perspective, we sign off on that kind of thing if it's allowed outright with any-
So, what is that zone there? What zone is that, Barbary Residence?
I believe it was R. seven point two, the low-density residential. And if you look in there, you'll see it's, I think, adult foster care, just foster care is allowed outright. And you look to the definition of foster care, and it defines how many individuals that means.
Right, you can't alienate people even if we wanted to, and I don't think we do.
In that case, since they weren't doing any exterior modifications, they're not going to like, so as part of that, they're not, you know, eliminating the garage door on that garage at all?
It looked like they were just keeping it. I didn't look at the internal plans, but it looked like it would just become a wall. And it wasn't going to be like a normal garage door, just become part of the residence. But it still met all of the setbacks and everything.
Okay.
It wasn't any, you know, structural alteration that wouldn't have been allowed otherwise for the dimensional standards in the code. The use was allowed. If at any point it becomes that they're having people, I think it was greater than seven individuals at a time, it's noted in the building permit sign-off that that would become a violation. So, that'd be an enforcement matter at that point.
One thought as we move forward. So, as we have things like our various committees, organizations, CPOs, whatever, would it be possible to maybe add another row, maybe for how much of you, how much time is being spent? Not necessarily time and hours, but just an idea of how much time is being spent on all that stuff? That way, we're able to keep track if it's starting to escalate quickly?
You mean building permit review?
Not building permits, but like for all of our committees or organizations, things that you're participating in. So, like if we start having you help with, say, CPOs or with extracurricular things outside of this meeting, so that we can tell if over time, we're starting to request more and more of your time. I don't know, maybe we're to work with the mayor on how to best represent that, but it'd be good for us to be able to keep track if we're starting to overutilize you.
And I kind of defer to Jackie right now for anything outside of, you know, just planning-related things, whether that's okay budgetary-wise for me to work on. So, until it came to a point where I got direction from her that it was okay to expand what I'm currently doing, I wouldn't need to track any of that. But certainly, a discussion you could have internally, and then let me know. I'm happy to be more involved as you see it.
You want to maybe follow up on that?
Yeah, we've already started discussing that.
Yeah, I think, you know, the best thing is if the Planning Commission has any questions, is route those through Tammy or myself. And then, you know, we can contact the mayor or the city administrator, something like that.
Yeah, we can't, you know, we don't want to just start inundating paid staff with a bunch of questions.
I have a feeling you were just yielding the question because you wanted to see what activity is going on.
I just wanted to make sure that we're not overburning her with, you know, we always assume that we have planning staff available.
And we don't.
Well, and, you know.
Yeah, Melissa's on a contract, and it's, you're pretty much set up, and you know what your routine is, and then, so those things are pretty well-run, I think, at this point.
Yeah, I don't participate in any other kind of groups or city planning organizations or tenants. Not that I don't think it's beneficial, I'm just, it's not part of the contract right now. So, other future items on here, really quick. You'll see the eighty-second Ave Bridge. County Water and Environmental Services Department is handling that project. It's a structural retrofit and improvement of the eighty-second Ave Bridge in Gladstone. So, it'll be a pretty significant construction project where they're removing the footings, laying new footings, making it safe for its public safety earthquake retrofit of the bridge.
Talking about the walking bridge?
Mm-hmm. And it will be closed for some time to the public, understanding, you know, community concerns for access, maintaining that open. We're going to be bringing this up at the next Planning Commission meeting. Because it's all an administrative permit, you won't be acting on it or voting on it or hearing about it as an official item on the Planning Commission agenda. So, we'll kind of just give you a status of the project, brief you on, you know, design specifics, a little bit like an item where we would give a PowerPoint presentation, just so you have the background, just because it is kind of a more intensive construction project, just to get kind of upfront, so you have all the information you need when you see the administrative permit come through.
So, the retrofits are just to make it more structurally sound, not to add on additional utilities or water?
It's my understanding that they're redoing a utility line that runs underneath it, but it's not an expansion of anything necessarily.
Just replacing the existing.
That's my understanding so far. And one of my colleagues has been working on that. She's working on the administrative level, staff reports. So, she has kind of more in-depth information about the project right now. And then the other ones on there, let me know if you have any questions. We're just kind of keeping you in the loop on things that are coming up in the future.
Right, just for the record, they're the last street there. There's multifamily apartments coming.
Yeah.
They're going to demo a home and put two homes on the lot. And then there's, will be upcoming at some point, an exeter, a triplex.
Yep.
What all those things have in common?
People.
It's not a trick question. The density is going to increase here, and things are happening. And all the decisions we make are going to come back. I just see that, you know, it's happening, and so I'm glad you're here. And I just want everyone to know that I've been going back and looking and photographing at things we've approved, trying to track, you know, our decisions so that in the future, we can make smart ones. Thank you.
Yep, definitely.
Thanks, Melissa. Melissa, the Webster Road and Ridge, I think that's Ridge Drive. It may be Ridge Road, but I think it's Ridge Drive.
Uh-huh.
That must have some demolition involved, too. I'm unaware of any naked land there.
It's actually a vacant parcel, so it's behind those newer apartments that were, I think, approved maybe last year or the year before it, multifamily apartment complex.
I know where it is. It's back behind on the corner.
It's kind of tucked in behind it. Part of the property, they're going to do a partition to separate out, I think, a little tiny strip that might have part of like a water, some kind of water tower, something on it, some other kind of industrial development. But the rest of the parcel, which I think is over an acre, is vacant. So, they want to rezone it and build an apartment complex on it, or three to eight-unit kind of clusters.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right. Next, we're having a public hearing on file.
We need to approve the-
Sorry?
Sorry, I think we need to approve the monthly planning report.
Oh, do we? Do you want to make a motion to approve the planning report?
I make a motion to approve the monthly planning report.
Commissioner Langston?
Second motion.
And Commissioner Pat Smith. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. None opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we ready for the public hearing? Next, we're having a public hearing on file number Z-0615-18-D, and Z-0618-18WBV, like Victor. Construction of a showroom at Tonkin Hyundai. New enclosed service reception drive, remodel service department, regrade, reservice a portion of the site to include a new display plaza at 19300 McGlougham Boulevard for Access Design Group, Brett Investments LLC. And the way that the public hearing will work, I'm going to read how we're going to do the public hearing for anybody that doesn't know or is interested. The public hearing, which I just read, will be conducted as follows. Staff will present the staff report. Questions of, if any, by the hearing body for staff. We will then open the public hearing for testimony, and time will be limited as follows. Applicants, it says here thirty minutes, but they usually don't go that long. And persons in favor of the application, persons opposed to the application, rebuttal from the applicants. Then we will close the public hearing, and no other comments will be heard from the public or the applicants. Final comments by staff. Questions of staff, if any, by the commission. Discussion and deliberation by the commission. A decision may be made by the Planning Commission at the close of the public hearing, or the matter may be continued to a time and date certain. Any party may request a continuance of this hearing or may request the record remain open for seven days. If the matter is continued to a date certain, this will be the only notice of that date you will receive. If you wish to speak, please come forward to the microphone. When you come forward, please state your name and address for the record. In making a decision, the commission must consider whether the applicant meets the relevant approval criteria in the city's land use regulations. Those criteria are identified in the staff report and are available in this room this evening. And also, online, we have all the documents that you can open and read or download. The testimony and evidence must address these criteria or other criteria you believe apply to the decision. Please note, if you fail to raise an issue with sufficient specificity to enable the commission, the applicant, and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal that issue to the City Council or Land Use Board of Appeals. Unless the commission is making a recommendation to the City Council, the commission's decision will be the city's final decision in this matter unless appealed to the City Council. An appeal must be filed within fifteen days and in accordance with Chapter 17.92 of the Gladstone Municipal Code. Failure by the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues regarding proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the commission to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. At this time, I would like to ask members of the commission to disclose any ex parte contacts, bias, or conflicts of interest. Have members visited the site. And let's just start on the end.
I'm only driven by.
I have visited the site, yes.
I did last time and not this time.
And I did last time and not this time as well?
I've been there actually both times.
I visited the site today.
Does any member, and is there any bias or conflicts of interest by any commissioner?
None.
None.
No.
Good. No. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the commission to hear this matter? Seeing none. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge any Planning Commissioner member's ability to participate? Seeing none. And thank you for bearing with me. I'm not the greatest speaker, but I think that, you know, when somebody comes and looks at the video, the place is packed tonight, so, you know. But if anybody wants, you know, sometimes people want to look at the video to see what actually went on in the meeting. It's good information, and if the place was packed, which it is occasionally, it'd be good information for people to know.
I can't allow crowd noise.
It is. Staff will now present the staff report.
Thank you. Today, we're considering design review application number Z-0615-18-
Can you move your mic closer?
Yeah, thank you. -18-D. Is that better?
Yeah.
And the suite of environmental overlay land use applications. The proposed project was previously approved under Z-0582-17-D. However, no extension was filed prior to the expiration date of that design review approval, and as such, the approval expired. The applicants have resubmitted the same project that the Planning Commission approved under Z-0582-17-D. In the previous approval, a Habitat Conservation Area Construction Management Plan, or CMP, was a condition of approval. However, as part of the current application, the applicants have submitted all required environmental land use applications for concurrent review with the design review. The subject property is approximately 3.2 acres in size and is zoned general commercial, or C3. The existing auto dealership on-site is comprised of two main buildings along with the parking and display area. A Title XIII habitat area that read there on the screen, you'll see. And Title III wetland is mapped in the southeast portion of the site. However, these areas and associated buffers are not proposed for development or modification of any kind. The proposed project was noticed according to the zoning title's requirements for design review, and comments from City Fire, Public Works, and County West were received. I'll go over those in specifics and how they were incorporated into the conditions of approval as well. The proposed project includes the construction of a new showroom, approximately 3,020 square feet, and a service reception drive that will be connected to the existing main showroom and service building. The proposed project is consistent with all of the applicable building, siting, and design criteria as well as parking, landscaping, and circulation code requirements. A detention swale is proposed in the existing parking lot area of the property to improve runoff, detention, and treatment. City Public Works will be reviewing the final plan prior to building permit sign-off as required by recommended special condition number five. And that inclusion is based off of their submitted comments on the project. The mapped water quality resource area overlay, or WOKRA, extends onto a portion of the property's southwest line. As you'll see, that kind of red or magenta line on the bottom right corner of the screen there. That's the buffer limit. The mapped Title III wetland is the kind of blue striped overlay that you see. City planning staff submitted a formal notice to the Department of State Lands, or DSL, in 2017. A letter of response from DSL provided concurrence that the proposed project would not impact any of the Title III wetlands on-site. No grading or site improvements are proposed within the WOKRA area or the fifty-foot buffer area. Specified by Gladstone Municipal Code, Section 17.27.020. As such, no WOKRA development permit was required. The Habitat Conservation Overlay. The project, proposed project occurs within a hundred feet of the mapped HACA, or Habitat Conservation Area Overlay, and is required to obtain a HACA Construction Management Plan. However, since no development is proposed within the HACA itself, a HACA development permit is not required. The HACA is located approximately eighteen feet below the construction area and approximately sixty-two feet away from the construction area. The Construction Management Plan includes measures to protect the existing habitat resource during construction. And you'll see those specified in that special condition associated with the Habitat Conservation Plan. I think it's special condition number nine. Additionally, County Water and Environmental Services staff, or County West, required the applicant to submit an erosion control plan to ensure further protection of the habitat resource. So, that was their requirement that they expressed in comments we received via email. And we've communicated that already to the applicant, so they're aware of that requirement. And you'll see that as special condition number four. Planning staffs recommending approval of the proposed project with six standard conditions and ten special conditions of approval. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the recommended special conditions.
So, on page 310, the very last paragraph, to the bottom.
Yep.
It mentions that the proposed detention swale will improve the drainage on the site and improve the water quality of the site runoff. What impact is that going to have on the Title III and XIII area?
So, it's my understanding, right now, the condition on-site and the topography is such that water pools in a certain area of the parking lot.
Right.
And kind of just collects oil and grease off the parking lot. In kind of a high-flow event, rainfall event, I would imagine it drains further off-site into the Title III wetland. The improvements proposed would concentrate that detention area so that it stays in that location and is, the water quality of that runoff is improved in that on-site instead of running off into the Title III wetland. So, it would be an improvement overall in habitat quality because of the reduction in polluted off-site runoff.
So, the improved runoff doesn't mean more runoff. It just means that what is runoff is better quality.
Mm-hmm. It would be treated on-site.
Be treated on-site.
Yeah.
And this is new from the one that we, this is, this proposed item here is new from what was brought before us a year ago, isn't it?
It's my understanding it was proposed in the original plan. I don't know if it was called out in the staff report, but we wanted to raise your attention to that because of the Title III wetland. But the applicant can, or the applicant's representative could clarify that if you had questions.
On 36, under the general siting and design, the first block, this is not going to affect tonight's hearing, but I do want to call attention to this. I think this is something that we need to get together with you at some point and revisit those, that section for code. Because I think that it may be out of date at this point in terms of like solar and with the weather changes and stuff. But maybe we need to revisit what those recommendations actually are. For tonight, we need to go with what it says today. But I think we need to revisit that section so that we can look at that as a follow-up.
It's my understanding that they are outdated, especially concern compared to what the county- county- county's regulations are, which are more up to date for solar, so that would be supported by planning staff certainly.
Okay.
Got a quick question or a reference back to Commissioner Malachi's input. I too was visualizing, now that we've got things delineated and a better picture, the swell is a necessity, it probably always was, but, and I understand it'll be engineered, I'm not questioning that, it won't affect my vote on this, but I'm trying to get a better picture of how big this is, or, you know, when I look at it, the volume of it, and the only reason is that the place is famous for flooding, and I know we're going to get it, it's going to be far better than it ever was, and no doubt about that, but I'm just curious as to, when someone says we're going to build a swell and it's going to work, hopefully it does, usually it does, and so that, just because of our experience, that's why I'm even raising the question of...
Certainly, and I'm not qualified to look at the infiltration calculations or anything.
And I'm not asking you to guarantee their design, but...
So Public Works is going to weigh in, and that's why that condition is in there saying that they have to give sign-off before the building permits are released, because they're going to be looking at the calculations and then actual numbers to make sure that it can accommodate the volume of runoff given the impervious surface and...
But it'll go through Mr. Wyonup.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good, thank you.
And you said that we did not get any feedback from the police department, is that correct?
Uh-uh.
Can we make sure to follow up with them to make sure that they're giving us feedback on these things on a timely fashion?
They do receive the information, but yes, I can follow up, yes.
Okay.
Any more questions or comments? The applicant, the applicant or applicants may now present testimony and arguments. Would the applicant like to present testimony or arguments?
Uh, not unless there are questions.
Commissioners, did you have any clarifications to what Les was just saying?
[inaudible].
Yeah.
Um, yeah, we actually...
Can you come up to the mic?
Sorry.
Just state your name and, you know, your business and...
My name is Kendra Kozak with Access Design Group. We're located at 11104 northeast, southeast Stark Street in Portland. And I just wanted to mention, we received a letter from Public Works Engineering Department stating that they have reviewed the engineered plans for storm drainage, and they approved it.
That's good.
And I believe, I believe you were copied on that, Melissa?
Yeah, we have that on record.
Any other questions?
Regarding this... Oh, I'm sorry, I was going to, can you give us the, are you familiar with what the dimensions are of the swell that they're going to, that they're going to build back there?
Uh, yeah, if we pull up the plan.
Seven by seven.
This is a depiction, but it shows something.
The areas are up here, H M, and up here.
Oh, two, okay.
It's my understanding from our civil engineer that the areas that are being proposed should meet all code requirements for the amount of impervious surface we have for the site.
Okay, I think we were just curious about how deep, how, what the size is going to be of it.
As far as the volume, I'd have to defer to our civil engineer.
I have a couple of questions, I hope you're in a position to answer them. On page 310 toward the top, it says applicant does not expect additional traffic as a result of this project. I noticed that the building, the actual building size in relation to the property is going to be slightly larger than the ones that they have now, and I'm concerned about employee, customer parking, adequate space for inventory, are you going to be offloading on McLaughlin Boulevard or on the property itself? And I'm not sure that that's in your wheelhouse.
Yeah, no, I can certainly respond to those things. So as far...
Well, see, I was wrong already.
Yeah, as far as the overall building footprint, for the most part, the showroom, the new showroom isn't much larger than the existing. The new showroom will have canopies, and that's part of Hyundai's new design. One element that is increasing the square footage of the building is an enclosed service reception area, which they didn't have previously.
Right.
So that function still existed on the site, it just wasn't enclosed. So for those reasons, we aren't anticipating higher traffic volume. Parking, customer parking, pretty much stays how it is, and there are no increases in vehicle storage onsite, so as far as those elements go.
Should be, how about employee parking?
Should be all the same. Same.
Same?
Same as before.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
By the way, I do want to compliment you on the quality of the materials that your company presented, there's a lot of good stuff.
Oh, thank you.
Down on the bottom section there, the shaded end, so the line around it is the construction fencing, right?
Do you bring to this line?
Yeah.
That's the edge of the [inaudible].
Okay, so, oh, I see, so you're just going to be putting the construction fencing at the edge of the asphalt, right?
Non-permeable, you have there.
I'm just wondering because it looks like there's car parking spaces there, I'm just wondering, is there anything to prevent those cars from going into the wetland area?
Yeah, so my understanding that the area right there is used for vehicle inventory storage, that's not customer parking, employee parking areas. Construction fencing will be in place before any sort of demolition construction starts on site.
So afterwards, after it's all done. Is there anything to prevent the car from going into the wetland area or parking on it?
I'd have to defer to our civil engineer.
There's a grade drop-off right there, too.
Okay.
It gets really steep, so...
It's really steep. I think Melissa mentioned how far down?
I think 18-foot drop, if you look at the...
It's not likely.
Yeah, it's...
Kind of more like a ravine in there with the stream at the bottom.
That's where the end of the wetlands.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone wish to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none. Does anyone wish to speak against the application? Seeing none. Excuse me, does anyone wish to provide neutral testimony? Seeing none. There's no need for rebuttal. Does staff, excuse me, does staff have anything to add or wish to recap?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does any member of the commission have any questions regarding clarification of the testimony to this point? If there are no further questions, I will close the public testimony portion of this hearing.
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
I second.
Uh, Malachi and Natalie Smith, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. None opposed, public hearing is closed. Deliberation, are there any further questions of staff from the commission? Lively group tonight. That's good.
It's not often you get a perfect application.
I mean, it's one we've already approved with additional information, right?
Exactly. Is there any discussion by the commission?
I have nothing.
Yes, you must have something.
This looks good.
Only thing I'd like to mention is that the, you know, this thing expired just days before the applicant wanted to renew the application, and I think the fee, the general fee to do that is, for this application, was something like $25,000 to resubmit the application.
I think it was $10,000, I think.
Was it? Anyway, it's important that we let the applicants know, in my opinion, that it's good for one year. I know we say it, but, you know, once things get approved, a lot of times, people forget. Anyway, just a point. Is there any other discussion by the commission? Motion?
I make a motion that we accept the application, and do, Ms. Bannick, do these numbers all need to be read?
I would read them all for the record, yes.
Okay.
I'll second that if I don't have to repeat it.
You do not.
Exhausted.
Motion made by Commissioner Pat Smith and seconded by Commissioner Les Poole. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Commissioner Natalie Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Malachi?
Yes.
Commissioner Poole?
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith?
Yes.
Chair Olet?
Yes. Looks like the application is approved. If you have any questions at all, go ahead and contact staff, and they'll be able to answer those for you. Congratulations.
All right. Just a question I tend to ask, when do you think you'll be starting? I mean, as soon as we get the water under control, hopefully spring or something, because you're probably pretty close, aren't you?
Yeah, plans are currently being reviewed by the council for the winter.
Good, good, thank you.
Any members of public wish to make comments or testify about anything at all? If not, let's have business from the commission.
Uh, I don't have anything right now.
On Sunday, out of curiosity, I made a stop and looked at car planets to see that ramp that goes down, and I know at this point, and I think you've already sent an email, at least from what I saw, about following up on that.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything.
Okay.
Melissa?
So I've been directed not to spend any staff time on enforcement matters, but that's in Sean's hands?
So I think...
And CCing and forwarding things to him.
I think what we need to do is, there's a form that you can fill out online if you want to have a, make a complaint, and that'll be an actual item of public record that has to be followed up on, and I think that's the best way to do that. As a member of the public, you have every right to file a complaint. So there is a form that you can download and do that and submit that complaint.
Okay. You never received a permit for that at all, did you?
No, I think when, I think Sean asked building codes or, there was some communication with county building codes, and the applicant's response was that that was part of their building permit submittal, but somebody could open up a complaint with county building codes, you could, you know, any member of the public can call them and say, I'd like to file an enforcement complaint that this is inconsistent with the building permit that was issued.
I guess you could file one with the county and one with the city, because the city has a form, too.
Well, I know I saw your email chain, and you did follow up on it, I was wondering if you had heard anything more about it.
I just said I think we should, somebody should go over there.
Yeah.
And nobody contacted me or commented on it, so at that point, I just, what do you do? I could have filled out the form at that point, and I didn't.
I will see, I will see if I can find anything out for you and get back to the commission.
Thank you.
That would be great, thank you.
I have no idea what that, it's four, like it doesn't appear to lead anywhere.
It looks like there's a basement or something.
Yeah.
Looks like it's going to go down underneath.
Maybe they're going to dig the bottom out of the thing and have more cars down there, I don't know.
The applicant has a copy of the application for, to modify the landscaping, we met with them, so it's kind of the ball's in their court, and I haven't heard anything else from them, so there's only so much I can do on the planning end of things, so, yeah.
Right, right, no, I understand, I just, being planning commissioners, it's like, you know, we have these codes and ordinances that we're, that we're following up on, and when we have people out there doing stuff that aren't getting permits or following the codes, it's like, okay, yeah, we have to do something. That's all I had.
I would just like to thank the council for reappointing me to the commission. It's hard to believe I've been here over four years already, just, you know, I'm sure the next four will fly by even quicker. Thank you.
And thanks for doing that, Les, for doing the work you do.
We're having fun.
Yeah.
And thank you for your confidence in me as the chair, too. Thank you.
I don't have anything, Chairman.
All right, would someone like to make a motion? Oh, by the way, boards, committees, and commission training orientation for members has been scheduled for Wednesday, January 30th, from 5:30 to 7:30, are they going to feed?
We'll be sending out information to all boards, committees, and commissions.
And would you like, is, this is kind of like an open thing for everybody, isn't it?
Correct.
Whether you've been just reappointed or not.
Correct, yes.
I think it's a good idea to go to those things if you possibly can.
I've gone to two or three of them, and each year I've gone, I've learned something new.
Yeah, absolutely.
Even better.
And I know a little bit about that, I've had like four trainings on ethics, not because I did anything wrong. It's just, you know, Gladstone did a really good, a couple of really good ones recently, and then I had a couple of them at work at the sheriff's office, and it's really important, ethics is very, very important.
I think these training sessions are outstanding for all the boards and committees, so that we're all playing on the same field and following the rules, so that we can be representing our city in the best way we can, so, thank you, City of Gladstone.
Motion to, anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn the planning commission meeting.
I second.
Natalie Smith, Commissioner Natalie Smith and Commissioner Langston, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, meeting is adjourned.